All right. Good evening. I'd like to call the Wednesday, March 13, 2024 Douglas Planning Board meeting to order. Time is 7:00 PM. First item of attendance, Mike Zwicker, Aaron Socrat, and Ernest Marks excused. That's it. And then just a roll call around. Jacob Schultzberg's here.
Ms. Lashman, here.
Mike DeRose, here.
Rich Preston.
Mike Crocco, here.
Matthew Benoit, here.
Thank you. A and Rs, there are none. Moving right into public hearing, 7:00 PM, Douglas Highway Department, Town of Douglas/Highway, application for special permit on a scenic road, SR-29, tree removal, 37 Oak Street, possible votes. I'll read the hearing notice. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), in the Town of Douglas Scenic Road Bylaw, and the Douglas Planning Board and Tree Warden are holding a public hearing on the application of the Town of Douglas for a special permit to remove three dying trees along 37 Oak Street. The scenic road is Oak Street, Douglas, Mass. The public hearing is being held on Wednesday, March 13, 2024, at 7:00 PM in the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Mr. Furno, the tree warden.
Good evening. Adam Furno, I'm acting tree warden at the moment. So, back in the past, previous tree warding, I should say, has since moved to a different department in the town. He was approached by the resident of 37 Oak Street with a concern of these, two of the three trees that are listed here tonight. He had them evaluated by an arborist that we use, and the arborist, I'll read the tree assessment. Regarding the three trees in front of 37 Oak Street in Douglas, Mass., I recommend removal of these three trees in the interest of public safety. The large oak tree, though appearing to be healthy, is a very large tree, and the road limits its root system, and the drainage swale is eroding underneath it, compromising the structural integrity of the root system, creating a hazard to the roadway and wires along the street. The maple in the middle is also being eroded by the drainage swale and has some decay and a crack in the stem, creating a hazard. The tall but small maple tree to the right has significant decay at the base as well as the erosion problems, erosion problems that others have. This tree is quite tall for the diameter of the stem, and with the problems at the base, it poses a hazard to the road and wires as well. I recommend removal of these three trees as the best solution to eliminate the danger to the public.
Thank you. Mr. Benoit, anything?
No, I don't have any comments here. This seems pretty cut and driven.
Okay. This is a public hearing. Anyone in the audience have any questions concerning this application for 37 Oak Street? Or comments? Yep.
Good evening. Lisa Melzinski, 60, Oak Street. I just want to, I understand the safety issues here, but I want to say that Oak Street this past year has been under tremendous pressure from National Grid cutting back trees in order to string heavier duty lines, and some residents cutting down trees not knowing maybe that it's a scenic road, which also includes stone walls and the integrity of the walls. And so, I just wanted to speak on behalf of the scenic road designation, which I actually spearheaded years ago, because this is the road that connects the White and Res to Manchok Pond, and the more beautiful we can keep it, the more people enjoy it, because they come to Douglas for its beauty and to be outside and relax. And if we cut down everything and take away the stone walls, it just looks like everywhere else, and we use our unique environment. So, I appreciate that the trees have to come down, but I think we need to do a little more to maintain them and to be careful of residences in the area to make sure that they adhere to the scenic road bylaw. Thank you.
Okay. I'll just follow. If you see someone damaging trees, remove, breaking the stone wall, reach out to the Community Development Department. We've had that before, where someone noticed some activity going on. We issued a cease and desist. They had to come in, and it was stopped.
If it was on Oak Street, I have done that. I unfortunately never heard the result of whether they were asked to do any reparations, or if they got fined or anything else. So, I do appreciate that, and I did do that.
Yeah. I don't recall it. I don't know when it was, but going forward, if something that goes up, boom.
Yeah, but a lot of times the tree is down.
Yeah.
Which defeats the purpose. So, we try to, we try to be vigilant for the, for the street, because it's a scenic road, and like I said, it's been under a lot of pressure. So.
Yeah. I know I mentioned before, I'd like to maybe even get like a sign at the beginning of the road that says scenic road. So, at least it's known that it's a scenic road.
So, I can address that. So, we have had signs there. Unfortunately, we've had a lot of them stolen. We've, now, I think if you look at it, we stood on a plowed sander, and we put them that high in order to keep them, because we keep spending money putting them back, and they're getting taken. Same with Orange Street. It's the same issue we have there, too. It's not just Oak Street. So, and there's other signs in town that go missing, unfortunately.
All right. So, no issue with these three coming down?
So, my dad was the tree warden, and I know that trees get old and, and erosion and, and severe truck traffic that's been going on and things like that are hard on the trees. I just want more attention paid to keeping the trees in better shape. So, of course, I know that's a budget issue, but I also want to encourage people who are listening to think about making their own street a scenic road, because if you see Sutton, Sutton designated like every street.
Whole town's a scenic road, yeah.
A scenic road. And, and it takes a lot to think about, what are we doing when we cut down one of these trees, because it impacts everybody who uses the road.
All right. Thank you for your comments.
Thank you.
Anyone else in the audience? Anyone online for scenic road, 37 Oak Street, for tree removal? Seeing as none, board, any comments, questions, concerns?
Through the chair, I just have a question about when a road is designated as a scenic road. Oh, sorry. When a road is designated as a scenic road, is there anything that goes out to the people who live on that road detailing what their requirements are or what their responsibilities are for a scenic road?
I haven't been part of that process yet, so I'm not totally sure.
Adam, do you know if?
I don't know if anything's out there. I've known cases in the past, and that's actually not on Oak Street or Orange Street, that people usually go in, don't know it's a scenic road, and breach the stone wall and, you know, get reprimanded later, unfortunately. But I don't know if there's anything that goes out to them. I know it is brought up during the planning board, you know, the phase when they're, they're approaching you to clear a houselot or however that works, but I don't know if anything goes out in advance.
I could definitely see educating people on the stone wall piece especially, but, you know, obviously when trees are a hazard, then something really should be done. So.
Yeah, unfortunately, I mean, and Shirley and Lisa can tell you, you know, as Shirley's husband was the tree warden for many, many years here, you know, it, it does come down to a liability issue at some point. And it's very hard, because, and I'll bring up an example. I'm sure many people noticed the issue that happened on South Street where the tree fell on the car. That tree looked healthy. If you looked at that tree, you, luckily, knock on wood, they were, they were okay, and, you know, and that tree was a private owner or state, state-owned tree, but it looked healthy. And you wouldn't have just said, oh, that tree, because it's all green and it's canopy, but you just don't know. And it's very difficult. And so, when things get addressed, we reach out to companies like this to give us a full assessment, you know. If we don't, some of them are really dead, and you can say, well, yeah, they're dead. But some of them are questionable, and you have to look into it. Just like these trees, they're talking about the root structure. They're not talking about the green canopy. They're looking at the root structure, and the root structure's failing. So, that's where the concern comes in, because that's going to come over, and I would hate to have that happen to anyone. So.
Thank you.
Do you have a timeline on the job?
This should, if this goes through tonight, the tree company's back in on Friday. So, I'm hoping Friday that goes through. If not, they'll be here. We've been, if they don't get to it Friday, I know it's supposed to rain, so if they're not coming, then it'll be a couple of weeks after that they're coming back.
All right. Board, any other questions, comments? All right. Entertaining a motion to close the public hearing.
So move.
Second. Made by Mr. Preston. Second, I'm Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. Public hearing is closed. And I forgot to say it was open.
Mr. Chairman, I believe we're looking for a motion to approve with the following conditions. All three proposed trees along 37 Oak may be removed as discussed during the public hearing, dated today. No new driveway openings are being proposed. Any disturbance to any part of the existing stone walls located along the subject area of Oak Street shall be repaired to their original condition. No work shall be done until applicable provisions of the Public Shade Tree Law, MGL, Chapter 87 have been complied with.
So move. Second.
Motion made by Mr. Preston, seconded by Mr. DeRose. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
That passes. Three minutes to kill. If you have anything.
Decision for 17 Depot Street.
Okay. Board is going to look at the decision for 17 Depot Street. It's under signatures for the special permit. And that's probably in the signatures binder. Accessory apartment. Record of vote, special permit, 241.
So, the, the standard conditions are in there, but the four conditions that we added were the stumps at the driveway, condition number 11 on page five. Stumps at the driveway entrance shall be removed and disposed of properly, and any damage to sidewalks should be repaired at the expense of the applicant and the supervision of Douglas Highway Department. Condition 12, the applicant shall apply for building permits to construct retaining walls as needed to secure erosion for the driveway. 13, the applicant shall apply for and obtain a driveway opening permit for the Douglas Highway Department. And 14, construction vehicles should not park within the right of way during construction when practical. Those were the additional conditions in addition to the standard conditions applied.
Sounds, sounds good. I'm not fine with that. All right. So, that's in the to-be-signed folder, which will go around at the end.
Yes, the applicant reviewed the decision, and they're.
Good with it? Okay. And then, we'll probably, they won't be able to get the signatures or get it back to them timely. Do we need others? Yeah. Do we need other signatures, though?
Oh, yes. Yes, we do. You would need, um, two, three, four. Four is enough.
Okay.
Mr. Zwicker would be the other signature.
Okay. I don't know how long he's gone for. 715. Okay, that's just the draft.
We could do the extension for 16 Franklin.
Yeah. That's in the to-be-signed, too. 16 Franklin Street accessory apartment extension, possible votes under additional business. Any concerns?
No, that's the existing, same tenant.
Okay.
Square footage, no waiver, no request, just a rental fee.
Okay. That is 210113, maybe? Timon, did I know me? Okay, yep. So, that's in the to-be-signed as well. So, that will go around.
Send a motion to extend.
Okay. For the accessory apartment, just looking for a motion to grant the extension for 16 Franklin Street.
16 Franklin Street accessory apartment.
Send a motion to grant the extension for 16 Franklin Street accessory apartment.
So move.
Second.
Motion made by Ms. Lashman, seconded by Mr. Greco. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
All right. That one's all set. All right, 7, 716. Public hearing, New Shoreborne LLC, application for special permit on a scenic road, SR-30. In accordance with Mass. General Laws, Chapter 40, Section 15(c), in the Town of Douglas Scenic Road Bylaw, the Town of Douglas, the Town, the Douglas Planning Board and the Tree Warden are holding a public hearing on the application for New Shoreborne LLC for a special permit to remove portions of a stone wall and to install driveways in front of MAP 266, Lot 13, subdivision Lot 10, and MAP 266, Lot 13, subdivision Lot 11, both located on Orange Street. The scenic road location is Orange Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. The public hearing is being held on Wednesday, March 13, 2024, at 7:15 PM in the Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Copy of the application may be viewed in the Community Development Department during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on the proposed application should appear at the time and place designated. Public hearing is now open. All right. I assume you're here for this?
Yes, my name is Kevin Demers from Depreed Engineering. I'm here on behalf of the applicant. Chris Betancourt from New Shoreborne LLC is here as well, if there are any, any questions for him.
Okay.
The, this site, lots 10 and 11, they're currently, they're legal lots, no variances requested. We have Board of Health approvals for both lots, and it's currently pending with the, with the Conservation Commission for an RDA. So, the goal here is to get, get approval for a break in the stone wall for each of the two driveways, one for each lot. The driveways will be approximately 12 feet in width to enter the site, and the, that would, that'll be the only impact subject to the scenic roadway. Construction will be maintaining erosion controls and so forth, and we're complying with, with the town bylaws otherwise.
Mr. Benoit, anything for this?
So, a sidewalk was conducted with the conservation agent Monday? No. Friday, Friday, last week, and was determined that they're, they're in proximity to wetlands across the street. So, they have since filed a request for determination of applicability with our office for that, for the driveway openings. Otherwise, I'm open to hearing comments from the public on this.
Okay.
And one of the amendments to the plan was to, the original plan showed the widening of a driveway on Lot 12, which I asked that to be removed, since that's not part of the scope. And it's not on this plan. So.
Do we, do we have, there it is. All right. Board, any questions or comments? Mr. Benoit, in the, the Douglas Planning Board and the Tree Warden are holding a public hearing? Is he here? Does he, or is that?
There are no trees to remove on this.
Okay. All right. Public hearing, is there anyone in the audience with any questions, comments, concerns with this request?
Can you just explain the relationship with this request on the scenic road?
So, yeah, this is the removal of stone walls and on, on a, on a scenic road.
And the trees.
And, okay.
A lot of trees.
Okay. Are there trees being removed?
We're, there are no trees within the right of way that are being removed. There are trees on the, on the applicant's property that, that are being cleared for the purpose of the lot, lot construction.
So, you're specifically just looking for the permit for the stone wall?
Correct.
Okay. If I, if we can just kind of try to eliminate the background noise back there. I hear stuff going on. I keep trying to look up as to what's going on, but just try to wait till you're addressed to speak, please. I saw some hands raised, I think. Mr. Davis, approach and say your name and address, please, for the.
Hal Davis, ADR, on Street. I don't know if I've seen a more blatant violation of the scenic road statute than we have here. The stone walls and the trees within the 15-foot, I believe 15 feet, we did measure it, have already been done.
And the trees.
Ma'am.
And the trees. So, I realize it's an A and R lot, and they need to have access to the, to the road, so that's not in dispute. However, this is the first stop before you actually do the work, and we'd like to see a conceptual of what this is going to look like when, when their work has been done, how they're restoring the stone walls and, and what the tree situation is. So, I don't know why they didn't apply right away and why we're here after the fact, but that's where we are right now, and I hope you'll at least ensure that they do it in a workmanlike manner, and perhaps come back with a presentation as to what the, what it's going to look like after they finish their work.
Mr. Davis, is that with both lots, or is it one lot or both lots?
I think it's both lots.
Okay.
Yeah.
All right. Do you have a, I'm gonna go, I see the hands. I'm gonna nick my way around. Just have them respond to the questions.
I'm Chris Betancourt from New Shoreborne Farms.
Okay.
I don't know if you want me to address any of these questions.
Yes, please.
Okay. Before any trees were cut, you want me to sit? Okay. Before any trees were cut, we did have a meeting in town with Matt and Matt Wojcik and a few others to discuss the scenic road, the disturbance of the stone walls, and the tree cutting that was going to take place on the lot, and confirmed that the tree cutting that took place on the lot was within our jurisdiction as private owner to cut, and therefore that, those trees were removed for the building of a single-family residential home. We didn't do any driveway cuts, because Matt Wojcik and Matt Benoit asked us to apply for a special permit to disturb and repair any stone walls along Orange Street prior to touching them. So, we're here today to make that application, and Depreed Engineering has been hired to facilitate the details of the removal. The placement of the driveways has been staked and flagged, and we are doing a drainage system that needs to be incorporated into this as well, and this is us adhering to the request of the town. I'm not sure if that answers that.
Mr. Betancourt, you did clear some trees and start doing some work on the property?
On the lots.
On the lots?
Yeah.
Just, is there a stone wall along the whole road?
It's intermittent, but yes.
How did you access the site?
There was an existing logging road.
Okay. Generally, the applications for these that I have seen usually just come in with some pictures, so the board can kind of see what a, what the current condition is. And with, like, the picture with the stakes, where you're looking to do the work, you know, this is the satellite view, but with it being a stone wall and a scenic road, I think I would probably like to see what the condition is of the road at the time.
Okay.
And then also what it's gonna, you know, with the proposed, what the, you know, elimination of rocks are going to be.
Okay, so.
I don't know if that was just, what was it, it just didn't come through, but usually we have pictures of just with the current condition.
Okay. So, there are a couple of questions that I have in regard to this, where Lot 11 has a very steep topography between the road and the driveway access. So, I think there's about six feet of material that needs to come out. Now, we can do a retaining wall to make sure that the width of the driveway remains what it would typically be, or we can add stone wall and go up at an angle. There's a few things that we can do, and we're willing to do whatever you guys deem would be the best appearance at the end of the project.
Mr. Benoit, if you can just refresh me, now, I don't have it in front of me, but does the bylaw specifically say what we are looking for?
It's for the, or alterations in stone walls?
Tearing down or destruction of stone walls. I'm just trying to see what the restoration part would be.
It's typically a condition that we apply.
Okay.
Use the rocks and the stones removed from the driveway and repurpose them within the existing.
Okay. I just don't know if that, that was in here at all.
It's not.
Okay, that's more condition. All right. So, with that, I would probably like to see just pictures of what the site looks like, the stone wall currently in this condition before. I'm comfortable voting on it at this meeting, so.
Okay.
So, moving around, any, I saw some more hands up. Ma'am, please, if you can just, approach and just say your name and address for the record, please.
Kristen Immon, 19 Orange Street, and I'm just curious, because I already filed complaints for scenic road violations, one of them being Matthew Benoit lied to us, saying that he did not need a scenic road permit to disrupt the stone wall that he already disrupted. And he already did it. He already ruined some of the stone wall. There was stone wall in the road. He's already disrupted the road. Our side of the road was already disrupted, and he said that he was going to fix it once the snow melted, and he didn't. So, he's already not a man of his word. I think he has access points now, especially that one that he widened, which is 36 feet from wetlands on the same side of his property. You guys are talking about the other side of the road, but on that side of the road, the other property right there has wetlands that he was 36 feet within and disrupted. So, that's, he's already, he has a big enough area. He can make driveways with that area. He has enough land. He doesn't need to disrupt the road any more than he already has. And there's been nothing done above the complaints already filed, so it doesn't matter. I, no, we don't want him to do any more damage to the scenic road.
Thank you. Mr. Benoit, was there a complaint filed with this?
There was a complaint filed with this office, and the question was, was the driveway cuts, were they within proximity of the wetlands? So, I called Mr. Immon back, said the driveway is over 100 feet from the wetland. Now, the Lot 12 that was widened recently was brought to the attention of us when we went on site walk, and Brandon Faniff said that a filing with the Conservation Commission needs to happen on that. And that's on Lot, Lot 12.
Do you have a response?
I do. I do. It was brought to my attention. Matt gave me a phone call and let me know that there was a complaint, told me where it was. I went and looked at it. It was the day of a snowstorm, and somebody had plowed across the street and disrupted material on the other side of the road, and I was under the understanding that this is what the complaint was about. I came to the town hall. I met with Matt, and Mike was there, and we discussed what should be done. I agreed to go and do any repairs. They asked me to wait. They didn't want me to. want me to do anything until there was a site visit. We did a site visit on Tuesday. Was this past Tuesday, right? Well, Monday, Monday. And Brandon Fanaf was there, and we walked the driveway, the proposed driveway sites. We looked at where the plow had pushed across the street, and we talked about Lot 12, which has been an access point to the property for, I don't know how long. It was a logging road. And they asked me if I had authorized putting gravel down, and I did, and I didn't realize that putting gravel down on an existing driveway was an issue. We actually did driveway cuts all along Southeast Main Street where we're proposing to build houses, and they did that one at the same time, just so that there wasn't anybody slipping.
Do you have driveway opening permits from the town for these? I'm just curious what the, how that process is.
Lots 1 through 9?
Do we need roadway driveway permit from the town?
I would follow this far.
Okay. I'm just trying to think.
I actually went to Mrs. Inman's house last night and spoke to them, asking permission for Goddard Consultant to go and flag the wetlands across the street from the driveways, the proposed driveways, as Brandon requested, Mr. Fanaf. And they said okay, but they would like to be part of that, they would like to be there, be present during the flagging.
All right, so just, ma'am, I don't, judging what we're hearing so far, I don't think this is gonna be, the decision's gonna be made tonight. So if you can take pictures or anything, please just submit them.
I made pictures with my complaints, too. We can look at our history to see if we have pictures of what the road looked like before, like my son coming off of the bus from school. I think I have a good one of what it looked like before he damaged it, but I gave pictures, especially my property, too, where he's saying it was just from a plow, but there's rocks moved. I gave pictures to the town.
Do you have them? Okay. So any further thing you think of, please, just document it and forward it. Sir, I saw you had your hand raised.
All right. Jeff Inman, 19 Orange Street. He did come to my house last night and requested if he could have them come on to my property and my neighbor's property to flag wetlands. I told him yesterday that he could as long as I was there, and he called me and told me when they were gonna come and all that, and then after thinking about it and sleeping on it and realizing everything that's already been done, we decided that it's probably not in our best interest to let them in and be doing that. But, so like she said, the logging trail, they opened all that up to get their logging equipment in and out of there. So my suggestion would be, clearly they can get to those two lots from that logging road, that they just do a shared driveway off of that logging road, that they already took it upon themselves to open up, and that way they don't have to damage the stone wall any more than they already have, because I have pictures, too, if you guys want to see them, but, I mean, you can clearly see that the logging machine that they had, they drove it right down over the stone wall. There's still nice, big, deep track marks going right down to the street, so, I mean, it was pretty clear that it was deliberate. It wasn't any kind of accident or anything like that, so.
Mr. Benencourt, I know it's not on there. Are you able to point out where the logging road is that you access these on the map, or do you know, Mr. Benoit? I'm just curious, like whereabouts it are.
Is it labeled dirt road?
Existing dirt road?
Yeah.
Okay.
And they pushed dirt across coming down from that logging road, because Orange Street's so narrow, you wouldn't be able to swing a logging truck up and into there, so they pushed it into our property to make it so the logging trucks could swing out of there without falling into our property, because it drops off right there. And yeah, there is a, they keep referring to the land across the street from the driveway cuts that he wants to put in, but my big problem is there, as far as I can tell, it's a fertile pool. I mean, even today, walking down the street, you can hear hundreds of frogs in there, and I mean, this, it doesn't just disappear over the summertime. That water stays in there. If we have a really, really dry summer, it might dry up, but, I mean, through most of the summer, there's water in there. So that's where my big issue is.
Is there conservation involved in any of these two lots right now? Is there a conservation order or anything with these two lots?
We recently, yeah, lots 10 and 11, we recently filed an RDA with the conservation agent, so that will be in front of the Conservation Commission, I believe they're on their April 1st agenda.
Okay. All right. Mr. Benoit, any response to those comments? I know there's a few. I don't know if you have a quick response of...
I do. First and foremost, nobody pushed dirt from our property to theirs. During a snowstorm, somebody plowed, and they disturbed the dirt on the opposite side of the road with the plow, and we do have pictures of that, and I didn't do any repair to it because I was asked not to until it was viewed, and it was viewed on Monday, and now we're waiting. It's approximately maybe a 15-foot stretch where it could be repaired with a rake and a shovel, but it's not...
I want to see you out there with the...
Sir, 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 you're not gonna disrupt this meeting. If you interrupt like that again, I'm gonna ask you to leave. I know you hear, you want to voice your concern, but please just keep it. We're trying to have it civil, all right? Anything further, Mr. Benencourt?
Like I had said during the meeting, you know, we've tried to hire all of the professionals that are guiding us through this process, and, you know, as far as the order of events with, you know, flagging wetlands and applying for A&R lots and then, you know, go through the process of clearing and going through the process of opening up a stone wall on a scenic road, I feel like we're doing everything that has been asked of us, and if somebody, you know, at the town hall said that there was something we didn't do in line or we need to do this, there isn't any argument. We're adjusting to what is asked of us, and it's, we're not sparing any expense. Whatever needs to be done is going to be done, and that's it. We're just waiting for somebody to tell us what to do.
Okay. I saw, man, you had your hand up, please. If you can just come, you have a kind of quieter voice, if you can just come up and just say your name and address, please.
Marissa Savidal, 72 Pine Street. Mr. Benencourt also visited us last night, because we have the parcel that's at the cross of Pine and Orange that he's looking to gain access to. My husband and I also discussed it. I told him I needed to discuss it with my husband last night. We are also not giving him any access to that property as well, and we're here because the stone walls have already been disrupted. They were disrupted when the trees were removed. There's been spray paint on some of the stone that you can see from Pine Street. It's just, there's so much that's already been done, and there's such concern from the runoff and what has been done for what's going to affect Orange Street that, you know, sometimes it floods, sometimes it washes out. It's a dirt road. It's a beautiful scenic road. We're just trying to be here to preserve all that.
Okay. Thank you. I see a hand online. I don't know. I believe that's someone looking to speak. I'm not sure. Oh, okay.
Who's the cursor?
Is there anyone on, is there anyone online that has any comments, questions, or concerns with Orange Street scenic road? Okay. Ma'am?
Haley Walsh, 11 Orange Street. So I'm just curious, it's more of a question, how this got taken so out of order that my husband and I built our house, and we were only probably 24, 25 years old, and we figured out how to follow the right order of events in terms of opening stone walls, getting conservation there before we started clearing, flagging our buffer zone. We were told we had to move our house 50 feet in one direction because it was reasonable that we shouldn't have to involve ourselves in the wetlands, and we couldn't fight it, really. We had to move it and abide by it, and at such a young age with no construction background whatsoever, we figured out how to follow the right order of events, so I'm just kind of curious how somebody with so much experience in a company that does this for a living, we never lived on a scenic road either. We went from an apartment to doing this, and I'm just a little curious how that got overlooked, and it definitely raises some concern for me of how many other things could get overlooked, that it happens first, and it's kind of begging for forgiveness afterwards to try to put it back the way it was rather than going the proper process, which, in my opinion, I work in software, I have no construction, but I was able to figure it out still, so I'm just curious how that got so overlooked and how we can rest easy going forward that there won't be more things like that.
Thank you. You had mentioned, Mr. Benencourt, you said, in your opinion, you followed the process with the town?
Right.
Okay.
We hired DePree Engineering in 2021 and have been waiting for the lots to be approved until just this year to be worked on. It's been a long process. We've been to many meetings. We've hired the botanists and attorneys that have depicted, you know, rulings and things of that nature that help decision-making. Everything that we've done so far hasn't been done without going through the proper channels in our estimation.
All right. I saw, just, Ms. Mazinski, you haven't spoken yet with this.
Oh, you're a gentleman?
Yeah.
Yes, Lisa Mazinski, 60 Oak Street. Mr. Chair, I'd like to ask the board to make sure in future hearings for this scenic road that the acting tree commissioner be invited to the meeting, because I just spoke to him in the hallway, and he said he knew nothing about this, and this is a hearing under scenic road application. So I'd appreciate it if Adam was at future meetings to comment on this.
That's a good idea. Thank you.
Adam was actually at our pre-meeting.
Yeah.
With Matt, Matt Wojcik, Mike, a couple other people were there. Prior to anything happening.
All right. Mr. Davis?
Hal Davis, ADR, Orange Street. It's really the applicant's responsibility to determine what statutes and bylaws are applicable to their application. It's trying to move out of this situation. You're gonna continue the public hearing, I believe?
I'm guessing so. It's probably the vibe it's going.
It would be nice if the town, first of all, could determine that the stone wall and the trees are within the 15-foot right away from the center of the road, which our determination is that they are, and then, I don't think there was a suggestion that you would put in a, some sort of a concrete or stone wall. We'd like to see, as much as possible, to see the stone wall restored, and like to see a conceptual plan of that, and then go back before you folks and then approve that, so that's just my suggestion is that you do two things, just see what's in there, and then take a look at it, and restoring it as much as possible, since the cow or the horse is already out of the barn already. The work's already been done, but I think it can be restored.
Thank you, Mr. Davis. Any other comments or questions from the audience? So, oh, I didn't, sorry.
Sue Perkins, 148 Wallam Lake Road. I wondered whether Mr. Benencourt has had previous construction experience and what that might have been, given that's appropriate task.
I don't know if that's appropriate, because any Joe Schmel can request a permit to have this work done. Thank you. So we'd like to see some pictures of the site now, where you're looking to propose to go in, where you have accessed from for both lots. And a conceptual, I know it's a scenic road, but some kind of, with those pictures of what it's like now and what it's going to look like post.
I think we were looking for a little bit of feedback on, you know, how it should be restored, and like I raised the question in the beginning of the meeting, that Lot 11 is a six-foot cut, and you can either go wider to retain the material, or you can build stone walls to retain it vertically, and we're happy with doing either. It's just, you know, what...
Yeah, I've built some walls in my days. I would have to just see what it looks like to kind of give my opinion on what wall I would prefer.
And, you know, one other thing, you know, I don't, I didn't stand over there with a ruler, but if it created a site distance visibility issue, you know, that might have to be discussed as well.
Okay. All right, and then, Mr. Benoit, if we can look into all the comments that have been made and investigate if, I don't know if it's the build inspector, if there has been a violation of, because, you know, the comments are pointing that way, so I would like to just have that looked into, please, before the next meeting.
I have a question.
Yes.
Through you, to Chris. Chris, I believe it's on Lot 11 on the map that you gave us. It looks like there's already a cut in the wall. Is that a rock?
It's actually on Lot 10.
Okay.
Lot 10, it must have been an access at one point that I would say many, many years ago, because it comes right down to the grade of the road, and there's no stones for about 10 to 12 feet, and it's been that way forever. I've owned the property for three years, two and a half years, and obviously that was done prior to me.
Assuming that would be used as access in future?
I suggested that it might be used instead of disturbing the law.
Yes.
You know, and that was raised in a, in a meeting that we had. I actually brought a video of it to that meeting and requested that that be the access to Lot 10, so that there would be no disturbing.
Thank you.
And, Mr. Benoit, I know one question was proposed. With two A&R lots in this area, is a common driveway allowed?
Common driveways for two, two lots is permitted by right, but three or more needs special permission.
So it is possible to do a common driveway?
Right.
But, so, since it was asked, if you can present if you find it feasible or not?
Okay.
A common driveway for the two?
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, can I ask a question? The existing dirt road going back into Lot 12 and 13, is that going to be further developed back there?
There's 275 acres on the interior, and we're doing a, well, we've had several meetings with administration to discuss how that would be appropriately developed, and we're currently looking into utilizing that property, the property for single-family homes and an equestrian. homes and an equestrian orientated village, I guess, you know, with outbuildings and things of that nature. There's actually another area that is 129 acres and another area that's 100 acres and we're looking at all of them in the same fashion.
And would, did you consider giving access to these homes as part of that?
It would be hopeful. I don't know if it would be required, but it would be hopeful to be able to use that.
I'm assuming you'd prefer to build now on the A&R lots rather than wait and give them access through whatever road you eventually put in there?
Well, I don't know whether or not that's going to come to fruition.
Mm-hmm.
You know, we're trying to plan for the future. I don't know when it would get approved. The, you know, the initial business plan that I had was to put together some of the frontage lots to help offset the costs that I've incurred to date and then to move forward. We're actively putting some conceptual drawings together that we will share with the town council. And so far, after a few meetings that we've had, our visions are starting to align. So, you know, we might be able to have something more concrete in the near future. We've also discussed doing some repair work to Perry Street. So these are all things that we're working on together.
All conceptual in nature and design.
Thank you.
Board, any other questions or comments for tonight?
I have a question.
Yeah.
On Lot 10, I'm wondering, is the proposed stone wall elimination wider there because of the slope? You're just trying to avoid the retaining walls?
On Lot 10? On Lot 10 specifically?
Lot 10, yeah.
The topography of the lot comes down to grade on Orange Street where there is an, I would call it a natural opening because it's been there for a very long time. I would consider that somebody must have done it at one point in time when it was a farm 100 years ago or what have you, but I'm guessing. But it is existing now and, you know, it would be, our thought that it would be a good idea to utilize what's existing instead of creating another opening.
I'm not sure if that addressed my question. The opening on one is 15 feet, the opening on the other is 30 feet? Is that right?
Yes.
And the way I see it in this drawing here, it says the disturbance on Lot 10 is going to be the 30-foot one.
No, that doesn't make any sense.
Well, that's what the plan says.
Mm-hmm.
Okay, so Kevin, do you?
That may be a type of requirement, which we.
And it says Lot 11 is 15 feet. And it's.
So typically a driveway is 12 feet and it may swell at the end a couple of feet in either direction?
Yeah, yeah.
And that's what we're intending.
So I'd anticipate 15 feet for either driveway?
So it should be 15 on both?
Correct.
Okay. When I was first reviewing this, I was wondering why one was 30 and one was 15.
That was a simple type of requirement.
Yeah, I can just, for the next minute, just make that change.
Can I ask one more question?
Yeah.
Mr. Benoit, is there a maximum amount allowed to disturb a stone wall for a driveway?
No.
There's nothing in the bylaws that?
No threshold.
No threshold, okay.
All right, now, when is our next meeting, Mr. Benoit?
27. Two weeks? Two weeks, 27.
All right, so we're looking at 7:15? Yes, 7:15 of Street for 7. Is that a good time, 7:15? Matt?
Yeah.
Okay. So I'll entertain a motion to continue the public hearing till Wednesday, March 27th at 7:15?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Motion made by Mr. Preston, second by Ms. Schleschman. Any further discussion? Seeing as none, all those in favor?
Aye.
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 All right, thank you. Work on getting some image in and everything we requested, please. All right, thank you.
Mr. Chairman, as we move forward, could I just ask that everyone use the microphone? The heat is on, it makes it difficult to hear you guys. It's hard enough already when you're not speaking into the mic.
Do you really want me to speak louder?
Yes, I do.
Noose. Do you have a pencil, Matt?
I do.
Catch up here.
For the record, I don't appreciate the butter calling liar in respect.
Yeah.
I answered their question with regards to the proximity of the driveway, so if that was not sufficient information, I apologize. I do not lie to folks who complain in their office. Just want to make that clear.
Yeah. Yeah, it seems like we just have a lot of, some research to do on this. Go from there. All right, 7:30 or a little late. It is 7:57. For public hearing for zone modifications to Douglas Zone and Bylaws, Amendment of Section 6.8, residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems, possible votes. In accordance with Massachusetts General Laws, Chapter 48, Section 5, the Town of Douglas Planning Board will hold public hearings on Wednesday, March 13th, 2024, beginning at 7:30 PM in the Douglas Municipal Center Resource Room, 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Mass. For the purpose of reviewing the proposals and amendments to the following Douglas, Town of Douglas Zone and Bylaws, 7:30 PM, adoption of new Section 6.8.
It's an amendment.
Okay. 6.8 residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems. The complete text of the proposed zone and articles can be obtained and or reviewed during normal business hours at the Douglas Town Clerk and the Douglas Planning Board located at 29 Depot Street, Douglas, Massachusetts. Public hearing is now open. And thank you, I was about to go out there.
Okay, so, Mr. Chairman, I understand that the legal notice reads adoption, but we've already adopted Section 6.8 as a solar bylaw last spring. So this is an amendment that was brought on by the Attorney General that we, I'm sorry, the solar bylaw was adopted, not last fall, but the previous fall?
Yes.
Okay. And then we got comments from the Attorney General's office in the spring and we held a public hearing in August, I believe, and we submitted a letter to the Board of Selectmen for these exact bylaw revisions. They made it to the town meeting floor, but they did not get voted on, so we had to re-advertise this public hearing for these same exact amendments in order to get it on for the spring town meeting warrant.
Okay.
The amendments were reviewed by town council and they are the same as proposed at the last public hearing.
Okay. And can you just confirm or educate, who provided these amendments and where the amendments come from?
They were provided by the Attorney General's office in Massachusetts and reviewed by town council.
Okay. Board, any questions, comments, concerns with this?
I do have one question, Chairman. So the Attorney General made the recommendations and did town council amend those further or just simply approve what the Attorney General?
They amended them slightly further, but those changes were marginal, but they were, they were okay by us and they were okay for community.
Thank you.
Anyone else on the board? Yeah. Okay. This is a public hearing. Is there anyone in the audience that would like to speak on the amendment of Section 6.8 residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems?
Yeah, I would like to speak. I'm on the Zoom call right now.
Okay. Can you just state your name and address, please? And if you can just do your best to speak up loud?
What was that last bit?
If you can just do your best to speak as loudly as you can.
Okay, yeah. So I grew up on Mantra Lake. My name's John O'Rourke. I grew up at 2 Torrey Road. My parents still live there. And recently I was home for Christmas and noticed that, you know, looking off the end of the dock, the rocks and everything have a lot of silt on them. So I asked my dad, what's going on? Why does the lake look so dirty? He let me know about this solar project, which he's very upset with as well. I had just found out about it. But I'm not sure why the focus is right down by King's Campground because my parents live over by the YMCA.
Mr. O'Rourke, can I interrupt you for a second?
Sure.
Just kind of a point of order. So this, this public hearing right now is just specifically addressing the language in our current bylaw. Do you have any comments or questions in regards to our current bylaw and the changes that are being proposed for the town meeting? This isn't a, this isn't anything specific about any certain project going on now or in the future or in the past. This is just specifically amendments.
Okay. Then, yeah, it was just me calling to voice my frustration with this and I'm not sure how the project got approved and it's affecting the lake a lot more than I think people are anticipating.
Okay, so I appreciate your comments, but unfortunately, there is not for this purpose that we're here for on this hearing.
Okay, thanks.
All right, thank you, John. Anyone in the audience?
Sure, we can get a copy of the proposed language?
Sure.
Yeah. Is there anyone else online that has any comments, questions, or concerns with the amendments to the solar bylaw? No comments, questions? Board, any comments, questions? With that, I will entertain a motion to close the public hearing.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. DeRose, second by Mr. Greco to close the public hearing. Any further discussion? Seeing as none. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Public hearing is now closed. And, Mr. Benoit, I know the wording of these things are kind of weird, so if you can just help us draft the motion that we're looking for?
Looking for a motion to recommend favorable action at spring town meeting in accordance with Massachusetts General Law, Chapter 48, Section 5, for the amendments to the new Section 6.8 residentially scaled and commercially scaled solar energy systems.
So moved.
Second.
Okay, motion made by Mr. Preston, second by Ms. Schleschman. Any further discussion?
Second.
Good. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Aye.
All right.
I do have a question, Mr. Chairman, sort of after the fact here, not having to do with content, if I could.
Yeah.
Matt, who will be presenting this at town meeting?
I will.
Sort of rhetorical question, but I just want to make sure somebody's there. I'd be happy to help out.
Yeah.
If there was a vacuum in future, but.
It's typical that the, a member of the planning board will hand the report to the moderator. That's, that's how they've always done it.
In the old days, we presented it right from the planning board, yeah.
Right.
If you could get on the chair.
Right.
And we did a good job, so. So, I appreciate you stepping up to do that, but in future, you do need somebody to do that. Should be someone on the board as opposed to no one.
It should.
Additional business master plan, any updates on that? Do they have their meeting?
The meeting is next Wednesday.
Okay.
It's next Wednesday at 7:00 PM. I did have a call with CMRPC consultant, Mike, I don't know how to say his last name, Mahan Brown, and I asked Mr. Preston to join me on that call. We were discussing the, the, one of the grants that we're trying to apply for and we needed to get all the information from our former master plan of what's been implemented since then. And Rich provided me with the final report of the master plan committee and I've scanned that in and sent it over to Mike Brown over at CMRPC. So they're kind of getting the ball rolling with the grant application process, even though we're still waiting for funds to be accepted at town meeting, but they've kind of at least got started with the review, which is nice to see.
Okay.
Mr. Preston would like to add anything to that.
No, thank you. I found the meeting very interesting. I'm hopeful that we'll get some funding or support from CMRCP and I'm looking forward to the first meeting on 20th, just to get the ball rolling, introduce ourselves to each other and kind of lay out a plan of action, if you will.
Yep. Okay. All right, moving on. Ongoing development, the cubes at Galboa in McIntyre Loom are, is that the right one?
Yes.
Yes. Any updates for us for that?
Yes, we have, I believe we've invited some folks here. I don't know if they're on Zoom or not, but.
Yes, I'm on Zoom. Our SWCA consultants.
And Ariel provided the stormwater reports that are in our packets. One was dated 3 March 7th and one dated March 11th. The board had any questions on those? And Haley Ward gave us a report February 20th, to which Beals and Associates provided a response letter that we had not reviewed prior to the last meeting that we have with us tonight. I sent the invite to those folks to attend and if the board had any questions. Right now, the Uxbridge Conservation Commission is generating an enforcement order for the entire property. Now, I think that's a little extreme for the entire property. I think it would be in this board's interest to send a letter to the Uxbridge Conservation Commission asking them to not shut down the entire property, it's outside of their jurisdiction for that matter, and only focus on the area of concern. I think that would be a wise motion to make.
So Uxbridge ConCom is looking to shut, or they're considering shutting down the whole project for? Right.
They already have, they've issued a cease and desist. I was at the Uxbridge ConCom meeting last week, so I can answer questions about that. But, yeah, they, they feel that since their wetlands are being impacted, that they now have jurisdiction over the whole project is their feeling.
Our Conservation Commission will be reviewing that at their next meeting and talking about it as to where their jurisdiction ends.
So right now, they're not doing any work at the site?
Well, they're just doing what needs to be done to, you know, maintenance as far as like what I put on my SWF reports and they're working on starting the process of fixing the stormwater infiltration basin, which is the cause of the problems to, but otherwise, there's no other work going on on site, no.
Yeah, it's a tough one. Very weird predicament.
There's no one here from there. Where is she from?
An environmental consultant.
None of this has to do with conservation, but I'm keeping us informed, just so we're not totally in the dark about this. These reports are typically provided...
It's really hard to hear, excuse me. Please.
Closer. I'm trying. So these are typically provided to Conservation Commission. I'm just opening correspondence to us so that we know what's going on with the active open site plan approval.
Yeah.
So...
Is there, let me see, I know Doug is on, but I don't know if Doug or Ariel can maybe show a quick aerial view of that site for us, of just like where this issue is compared to the entire site? I don't know if it's possible.
I don't have any aerial photographs, I personally don't. I mean, I can pull up the erosion control plan. That shows the, I have one, I have a couple of plan sheets. Did believe that I could share my screen. If you would like me to do that.
Yeah, if you can, try.
She did, already.
Excuse me, Mr. Chairman.
Pull it up here.
Yeah. If you turn up the volume on the TV, the other computer, that increase the volume coming out, going through the PA system.
Sure.
Maybe not the TV, but the volume on the computer. See the computer icon on the bottom right? I think that's where the audio feed's coming from. I don't know if that'll help or not.
Sounds like it might.
Yes. Okay. Let's see here. Can you all see that?
Yes, now we can.
So this is the infiltration basin, and you can see, or hopefully you can see that the, where the Douglas, Uxbridge Town Line is here, on the east, that's along the eastern side of the project, and there are wetlands, specifically ILSF, so isolated areas subject to flooding, over here, that are being impacted with turbid water and possibly sediment due to this infiltration basin overflowing and having issues. So that's, that's the kind of situation here, is these wetlands in Uxbridge are being impacted by the infiltration basin.
Okay. Are you able to kind of show a grand scheme of the whole entire site at all, just so we can see that that is a small area compared to the whole site?
Right, yeah. Let me try to get that pulled up, and then I will reshare my screen. Or let's see, I just, I only have the erosion control sheets digital, because that's, you know, usually mostly what I need for my job.
Okay.
So I don't think, I don't think I have one that shows the, I don't think there is an overall sheet that shows that, unfortunately. That's the only overall sheet I have, and that's just the borings beforehand, so that's not super helpful, I don't think.
I know, I personally know that that is a small, oh, what's that? Project site, it's kind of, okay.
Yeah, I don't, books again, don't know how helpful that will be.
All right.
Sorry about that.
Board, any thoughts? Well, Mr. Bunnell, what exactly do you think are, you're looking for, and maybe what our options are?
Promotion to send the Uxbridge Conservation Commission, the removal of the cease and assist to limit the scope to the area that's affected instead of the entire project. I think that's only fair to the rest of the development on the site that needs to take place.
Do we understand their rationale in wanting to shut everything down? If only that portion is being impacted? Have they provided any...
Well, I think they want to review, they want to look at the entire store, like they're concerned about the entire stormwater system, because, you know, ultimately that it's water from other parts of the site that are being, you know, directed into that infiltration basin. So I think that they want to review the entire stormwater system. And so that's, and then I think they just asked for other work to stop, to make it clear how important this is in their mind, now that that basin has overflowed multiple times at this point. Yeah, I think that's their standpoint.
Chairman, if I could?
Yes.
To do what their Conservation Commission is doing, assuming their argument is that the work would affect surface water runoff, but we don't believe that's the case, right, Matthew, that in terms of the entire site, that they would need to have that type of authority and stop work.
I just, I don't know how they are able to implement that level of authority in Douglas. That's where it's a real gray area in the Wetlands Protection Act, and Brandon could explain it a lot, a lot better than I could. But there's jurisdiction upgrading for what causes impacts to wetlands, as we've seen in some of the other projects that we're looking at. So they're trying to assert their jurisdiction, and the other town becomes a gray area. So I think our Conservation Commission plans on addressing that next meeting.
Okay. I'm just trying to, I don't want to, I don't want to step on someone's shoes either. Maybe we draft something, or we vote and potentially draft something. Do you think we have town council review it, or...
You can just ask me to put something together, you don't have to make a motion on that.
Yeah.
Put something together for council to review and then bring it to us.
Yeah, I just want to make sure we're not, you know...
Mr. Chair, I have a comment about this. By stopping all of the work, they're also preventing some of the repairs and remediations that are noted in the site report that really should be done. That's not in Douglas's best interest. So...
Well, the repairs can get done, like they understand that general maintenance needs to be done. Sorry, I didn't mean to interrupt you, but, yeah, they understand that maintenance needs to be done, and that the SWIP report repairs need to be completed and that sort of thing.
All right. So they can work on their stormwater management system, but they can't work anywhere else on the site?
Yes, well, and so part of the problem as well is that they want, Uxbridge wants an NOI submitted to them, a notice of intent, they want that submitted to them, and they don't really want much further work to go on, even on the infiltration basin. I mean, they want general maintenance, you know, to happen so that it doesn't overflow again, but they don't want the full restoration and redesign to happen without their approval. And Clayco doesn't quite know what to do because Douglas, Douglas Conservation Commission wants it fixed immediately, and Uxbridge is saying, you can't fix it until we review it. So, yeah, it's a complicated situation, and I don't think Clayco exactly knows what to do. We're trying to, you know, attend as many of these meetings as we can and do the best we can. So if, I think if the two towns could get on the same page, that would be really helpful, you know, for Clayco. They're just kind of trying to do the best they can do with keeping everyone happy, which is starting to get complicated.
Yeah, draft something and see what, it's a, that's a new one on me.
Yeah.
I'll say that. I have it on the board long, but that's new. All right. Board, fine with that?
Okay. Okay. All right. Thank you, Ariel.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. That's interesting.
Yeah. That's a real messed up situation.
Yeah, sounds it's... All right. Um, Business Park, Legacy Circle, anything?
Nope.
Okay. All right. BW Solar at Oak Street, special permit 200203 and 200203 for Scenic Road. Gentlemen, per usual, just name and address as you, as you speak, and just same for anyone online, just make sure you just say who you are before you speak, please.
Jason Smith, Blue Wave, Boston, Massachusetts.
Greg Morehouse, Mill Creek Renewables.
Pat Mahan, Jay Bateson's son.
We also have Mr. LaRosa from Weston Sampson.
Go ahead. Sorry.
And Seth, counsel. We also have Jeff Murphy, Bills &amp; Thomas.
Have you just give us an update as to what's transpired since we last spoke at the meeting?
Did you have a chance? I know that we sent it right after your agenda, but...
Yeah.
To hand those out to them? Okay.
Yeah, I think I...
Which, which packet?
With the red writing.
Oh, yeah.
Okay.
Yeah, there you go.
So that's kind, I haven't just, I haven't seen this yet, so this is just your, kind of your response to...
Yeah, point by point, what feels our Haley Ward laid out in their most recent report.
Okay. Has Haley Ward seen this?
Yes, we sent it to them this evening. They might have not had a good chance to review it at this point, but we sent that about. We got the report yesterday, sent this around 5:00 today.
Okay.
We were on site with them most of the day, too, so, with Cory from Haley Ward.
Yeah, Doug Bush, Haley Ward, I have received that document. I haven't had a chance to look at it.
All right. I know, Mr. Bush, I know last meeting, we kind of went through your report, but now we have their kind of responses. Are you fine if we go through their bullet points and you kind of weigh it in as it's presented?
Sure.
Okay. All right. So this is in response to the February 29th Haley Ward.
Yes. So we did get a new report yesterday, so point three is the only point from that new report, so if we just want to skip over that for review, referring to the February 29th one.
One of the things, Chair, that we've noticed is, a lot of the responses that we've been providing to all the ConComs and to you guys have not made it directly over to Haley Ward. So what we did here is we took the 29th and the 4th and responded to them.
Okay.
And so from the 29th, the only thing different from the 4th report was bullet three. Everything else is exactly the same.
All right, I get it.
Thank you for playing back.
Yeah. No worries.
All right.
There's only, yeah, there's only, he's correct.
All right. Thank you. All right. So number one...
So rumble plates, yes, they're on order, they're welded, big pieces of angle iron, like we've showed in the past, just taking some time.
Thursday, correct?
I think this Thursday, next Thursday, they're getting delivered, they're coming from Texas.
So those are the rumble plates to replace the yellow, the tracking?
Yep. But we've been kind of working on, you know, refreshing the stone, trying to keep the road as clean as we can.
Okay. Working to procure a new rumble plate, it's not common use on East Coast, waiting for on vendors. Entrance is 58 feet, plates are 20 feet by 14 feet. Mr. Bush, it's tough to see those numbers and visualize it. How were those numbers, how are you liking those numbers for the size of it?
Yeah, I'd have to look at, I'd have to look at that area again as far as the dimensions, but, you know, I think the main concern was just making sure that, you know, everything was wide enough for the larger trucks that were coming through. That's all we would require in that particular...
Okay. So how much more width, I guess, are we getting, or size difference?
It's going to be kind of a similar size, but I think the other thing we did was you kind of add some cones to the side of it so trucks couldn't, I mean, there, the rumble plates were, and there's maybe another foot outside of those that the truck could technically get off, so we tried to add cones on that to just direct them directly through this rumble plate.
Okay.
And then they still have the 58-foot dainty tracking pad after that before the road.
All right. I guess, so you said it's getting delivered when?
Next Thursday.
I would just probably see if we can work together to make sure Mr. Bush is satisfied with it, you know, that day, rather than, I don't, wait, and so, I don't want to wait, have him go in and wait a week, and then he's like, no, this isn't good.
One of the things that we learned today also on site with the sidewalk is that some of the information about our construction plans have not been making it to them, so they requested that we let them know what we will be doing so they can come out that day, and we've agreed that we will do exactly that. So the day they arrive, we will inform that they will be installed, and they can come out and see the installation the day of.
Okay. Yeah, I'd rather try to get the peer reviews blessing that day than having to wait the next meeting and hear that it's not good.
Agreed. Thank you.
Absolutely agree.
And Matt, I don't know if you can facilitate and just make sure the board knows as well for that, but, all right. Number two, this is, have you just kind of addressed what this is on your bullet?
Jeff, would you like to handle number two, please?
Sure. So number two is relating to Basin 1, and that there is repairs that need to be done to the basin farm. So our response is, design solutions are currently being developed to address and repair the north side of the basin embankment, as well as opportunities to disperse water downstream of the basin outlet pipe. The stormwater management calculations are being updated to account for the temporary sediment basins installed in the summer of 2023 and convert them into permanent features, which will be modified in an effort to reduce the amount of groundwater that appears to be ponding at the site entrance at Oak Street. So I think that is part of the solution where we're at, updating those calculations as part of this basin one, you know, reassessment, and that will be forthcoming.
You say forthcoming, now, I know the conservation has a deadline for something, they're looking to have reports in. Do we have...
Do, I think that Matt and I had a conversation yesterday about some of the clarity around what would have been requested from both the planning board here as well as the ConComs. There was some misunderstanding about Basin 5. We talked to Doug Bush on site, they now know that they've gotten started on Basin 5 for the third-party review, and we did have some discussion of what is referred to inside the scope of work of what is an amendment. And so amendment is a specific word that you guys have reviewed and integrated into the plans for which we have not submitted yet. So the clarification that we've asked Doug to connect with Matthew about is that it looks like Basin 1 as well would be as built as permitted, a third-party review, notwithstanding, we also know that we have been requested to respond in being able to provide what Murphy just described, which is obviously the repairs to Basin 1 that we're already aware of and documented, but also the, but also the integration of Basin, the two temporary stormwater basins into permanent basins. And that, I think that Murphy said that those would be coming not next week, but the following. His third-party peer review is out in PTO this week.
Yeah, we're going to be producing updated stormwater calculations that include the site entrance as a design analysis point, which is what Haley Ward had requested, so that's what we're going to provide, is those updated calculations, and then the updated, you know, plans that are going to have the modifications to make those basins permanent, as well as what we believe is a necessary solution at the site entrance along Oak Street. So we'll be incorporating that into the plan as well.
Okay.
And Jeff, I think we said not this week, but the week after we will have that, correct?
Yeah, I hope, you know, sometime in the next 2 weeks. Ideally sooner, but just we're working on it diligently.
We, we and the other ConCom agreed to the end of, not this coming, but the following week.
Okay. Trying to keep up.
Yes, if you have the March 29th report from Haley Ward.
Yeah.
So the comment from the one from March 8th was just noticing a little bit of silt buildup in Basin, yeah.
So, yeah, so this is from the 28th. So from the Haley Ward report, the sediment-laden runoff entering roadway. I'm just kind of curious if either Jeff or Doug or both kind of have an input that's sediment, you know, coming from water coming from down the site? Or is it possible that it's, you know, a truck came off the site, had some dirt on their tires, went through the puddle, and there was sediment that was left? I'm just curious, because sometimes you go by and there is sediment there, and sometimes you don't, you go by and there isn't.
Doug, we talked about it just a little bit on site in the 2 visits you've, you've been there. Would you like to comment?
Oh, sure, yeah, I mean, that particular inspection, you know, I had noticed that on the southern end of the driveway that there was water coming out of the stones, you know, not in a high flow, but, you know, it was still coming out of the stones, but it was carrying sediment with it. You know, as far as where it was coming from, I don't exactly know. You know, it was just, it was just appearing at the roadway or at Oak Street on the southern end of the driveway. You know, there's just, you know, when I went out on the 8th, that, it had rained about an inch and a half prior to that storm, but it wasn't happening. So I'm not, you know, it's kind of, you know, a little unsure as to, you know, what might be happening there. If it's just maybe, you know, water taking some of the sediment from the tracking pad and working its way under and poking out at Oak Street. But that was, that was, that was, that's what was happening on the 20th, I believe. No, it was the last inspection, it was 8th and then the week prior to that.
All right, thank you. But, but this is included in the Basin 1 review? This, that whole area?
Correct.
Okay. All right, number 3. Who can speak to this?
Jeffrey.
Jeffrey.
Yeah, so the next one, the next item was a question on whether or not the drainage swale that was being shown on the south side of the road going to Basin 5, whether that was a temporary or permanent feature. And the response is that the latest plans that were issued for construction that are dated June 21st, 2023, the construction plan set incorporated the final layout of the solar array, electric components, and interconnection configuration off Oak Street, which basically means the utility poles. The incorporation of the additional swell on the north side, or sorry, I guess, I should say, have written south side of the array, oh, north side of the array, but just south of that access road to intercept overland flow coming from the array area to convey it to Basin 5 via the sediment for bay. Other grading modifications are also shown to smoothly existing grades as required by the bracket manufacturer to meet construction tolerances. Drainage divides and contributing flow areas were maintained when making these adjustments. So basically, the swale was added onto the construction set, but it was within the subcatchment area that was draining to Basin 5, so it really didn't have any effect on what was designed and approved, because it was, it's all going to the same basin. So it was just an additional conveyance that was added to improve and improve conveyance of water coming from the array area and basically to protect the road and the access road and get the water to the basin more effectively, so.
Another, another way of putting it is, when we submitted for the building permit and the building permit was issued, that swale that was in question was on that set of plans.
Okay.
The reason I brought it up was I, the plans that we had in our possession did not show that swale. I think Matt sent over a set of plans today that we're going to have to, we're going to take a look at and make sure. You know, it was just a change to the plans that we had launched.
Okay.
Number 4?
Yeah, number 4. Jeffrey here?
Probably, yeah, I'm sorry. Jeff.
So our next one. Design solutions are currently being developed that will include the installation of a subdrain to intercept groundwater from above the sediment for bay and contributing swale areas and route it around Basin 5 and reintroduce that groundwater below the toe of the slope of the basin berm. The contractor will continue to pump and manage water from Basin 5 until such time that the WIC drain, outlet control structure, and pipe can be installed. The accumulation of water observed down gradient of Basin 5 is likely the result of several factors, including runoff from tributary uphill slopes from the berm fill slope. Water being channeled down the access road to provide vacuum truck access to the cleanup area in the northeast corner of the site and the possibility of existing groundwater seep in this area. The location will be monitored closely as construction continues. Additional cleanup of the stone below Basin 5 level spreader will likely be warranted after up gradient areas are stabilized to improve the clarity of water before it reaches the silt fence perimeter controls. And outlet control structure and WIC drain outlet for Basins 2 and 5 are on the upcoming list of construction tasks as weather permits. Currently, the basin is going to be, water level is going to be regulated by pumping of the water to temporary holding ponds at the top of the hill.
All right. Those, oh, sorry, Mr. Jeff.
Yeah.
And those outlet control structures are on site and they're just waiting for installation. We saw those on our sidewalk today.
Yeah, correct.
Just with the weather, you know, couple of inches of rain last week, we're still working down the basins, trying to lower them slowly.
Okay. I just know you guys are kind of working with one mic, just please just try, yeah. Yeah. Were you able to pick that up? That comment, you heard his comment? If you can just say that again, please, sorry.
So basically, yeah, the, yeah, the last week, we've had like 3 inches of rain last week. So, you know, we've been holding the water and slowly releasing it as it comes up. So just going to take some time to get this water back down to a level where we could get into these basins.
Okay. Mr. Bush, any follow-up on that?
Uh, no, we're just, you know, we were asked by the Conservation Commission to take a deep look at Basin 5. We just started that today and we should have something, some peer review comments on that shortly.
All right, thank you. All right. There's so many papers here, I'm making sure I'm on the right one. So number 5, the temporary diversion swale will continue to be monitored closely, especially at the termination point above the D-series wetland. That is in response to his number 5 from this day. Yeah, and his comment was to continue to consult the town of Conservation Agent and monitor this area. Any further with that, Mr. Bush?
Uh, no.
Okay.
Nothing further there.
Number 6. As-built grates of the swale are being collected, however, it should be noted that the intent of the swale is to intercept and divert surface flow from up gradient of the swale. Evaluation of the as-built grates will be performed that it, that it meets this intent.
Chair, those were, those as-built surveys were sent over today.
Okay.
Yeah, again, late in the evening, so you may not have them yet, that's my fault for not sending them earlier.
You sent them to Mr. Benoit?
I sent them to Mr. Benoit.
We have them as well, we just don't, I don't know what that is.
Okay, that's fair. All right. New progress, all right. Jeffrey, if you can just read me number 7.
Sure, yeah, so that one, construction of infiltration Basin 2 is ongoing, meaning that we still, the overflow spillway and weir are installed. The outlet control structure and outlet control pipe have yet to be installed. The WIC drain pipe has been installed in the floor of the basin, but the pipe connection or outlet pipe of the WIC drain is going to be installed in conjunction with when they open up the berm to trench to put the outlet pipe in. So they're going to do that all at once, so that is still to be done. And then one of the other items that we had, I noted that we had discussed in the February 21st sidewalk with Brandon as well as Doug was, we had talked about, so the approved plans called for lumen seed on the floor of the basin. So one of the things we talked about is it may be prudent to not install lumen seed just on the floor of the basin as it may further inhibit the infiltrative performance. So obviously, the side, interior side slopes and everything else is still going to be lumen seeded and vegetated, but we were thinking it might be an idea to try to not do that, to try to give the water the best chance to soak into the floor of the basin. So again, it was something that would probably ultimately need to be approved by the boards and the Conservation Commission, but it was just an idea, a field that we thought would be beneficial.
Okay. Mr. Bush, any comments?
Yeah, I mean, Basin 2 hasn't changed all that much recently. As far as the lumen seed goes, I guess I would ask, you know, to have, to have Jeff show that, you know, that if there's no lumen seed, that that floor wouldn't erode or carry sediment downstream. You know, if there's like, you know, if there's high flows, you know, we wouldn't want to increase any suspended solids in the basin. You know, with the, just gravel basin floor, we'd like to have those stabilized as much as possible to decrease that. And, you know, if there's something you can show that would, would help us understand that, you know, there wouldn't be, wouldn't be any erosion to that, to that floor, that'd be, that'd be something we'd probably ask for.
Jeff, we can respond another time to that, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
Okay.
I have a question, Mr. Chairman.
Yes.
I apologize if I missed this. What's the timeline for completion of Basin 2? I mean, we heard that it's ongoing, but do we have an endgame there?
I mean, we do, it's just, you know, we've got quite a bit of water in it right now. You know, we're hoping, I was talking earlier, you know, probably end of next week, you know, depending whether, obviously, if we get another couple inches of rain, it's going to be a problem, but we're hoping end of next week. We can pump it down this week, beginning next week, and then get in there end of next week.
Thank you.
All right. And continuing off of that for around Basin 2 is the rocks, pile, rock piles. You see, your, I'll just, your last comment slowly chipping away at this, both of them have been moved. You were out there to?
Yeah, we, we actually, I don't know, we didn't move as many as I thought, maybe. We're, I was a little optimistic then. We still have a bunch to move, but it's something we are, is on our list to do.
Okay. Doug, I think this is the conversation that we had on site where I think that you had a concern and the reason that you put it on here that you explained, that you thought that might be a permanent feature, but it's just a rock pile that we need to remove?
Yeah, I mean, I know all of the plans are showing no, no grade change in that corner. You know, as it is right now, there's, there's quite a few boulders, but not only is there boulders, but there seems like there's dirt pushed up that, you know, appears to swale, swale the, you know, if there is water in that area, it will kind of filter down towards, to the south of Basin 2, I guess, you could say. You know, on the plans, it shows no grade change. That was the only thing I was, I was, it was the only reason I was bringing it up.
And the intent is that it's not a permanent feature, it's just a pile?
Yeah.
We're removing?
Is that area proposed for lumen seed? Lumen seed, yeah, so we want to, we're approaching that window to get some lumen seed down and get some grass growing. Also, tree planting season's coming, too, so.
Jeff, and there are trees in that corner as well?
Check on the trees, because I got to see what they are, some of the evergreens have a different season.
Yeah. All right.
So I would say, taking away from that, Chair, move it as soon as we can, get it seeded so we don't have to talk about it?
That'd be great.
Works for me.
Mr. Benoit, anything that we may have missed?
No, I just think the board should weigh heavily on the response and comments from our peer review and our engineers for the stormwater management. And anticipation of Mr. Murphy's revised plans for Basin 1 is something that our peer review will, will give us a lot of direction towards and whether or not that we consider that to be a major or minor modification of the site plan.
Okay.
Decision this board needs to make at that time.
And I know something had gone out, there was a complaint that there might be work going in a phase ahead or something like that?
Sure, so, I was concerned that, and I read their email incorrectly, but I was concerned that they were cutting the road into Phase 4, which was not the case and confirmed today on the sidewalk.
Okay. All right.
We might have worried, I don't know how we worried, but like, oh, 2 days for Phase 4.
Yeah, to the limits of Phase 4 is.
So phase-wise, where, where we need to be, phase-wise?
Yeah, we, we haven't touched Phase 4.
Okay.
And they're actually going to stake the limits of Phase 4, and they should have that by the time Brandon does the next sidewalk next week.
Okay. So, and that was confirmed at the sidewalk that everything's, phase-wise is within the phase-wise, okay. Don't know how to word that, but I came up with it. All right, board, any questions? You guys any comments or questions?
Diver, diver, anything like that?
Nope. Yeah.
I did perform a sidewalk on site after a rain event, I believe, it was on a Friday. And I went up to the site and I, I met Mr. Murphy, who was up there, I think it was Friday morning, I believe.
It was Thursday morning?
Thursday morning, thank you. And I was just, I just wanted to see how it was functioning. And I was happy to see that there was no runoff in the street for the, for Basin 1, which was pleasing to see. I also met with some of the neighbors, Ms. Hou and Mr. Rossi, and walked their property and kind of looked at some of the drainage system that, issues that they have going on over there. It was, it was, it was difficult to tell if it was running off in the site, but you could tell that they've been adversely affected. And I just wanted to make sure that they're in contact with the wave for any remediation that they might see necessary. Just wanted to talk about that.
Okay. Yeah, thanks for going out and walking that. I know, when I went out there, I didn't get over to that site, but it was getting late in the day and whatnot, so.
All right.
I just, sorry, I had thought of one thing. On the yellow pylons that are in Lake Manchog, are those from, are those yours?
They are.
So now that they've filled, now that the water has come up, I just noticed, I drive by there several times a day.
Yep.
So are those actively, what are they actively doing right now?
So they're called turbidity curtains, and we were there this morning as well, and a variety of times with the different heights. You can see that they come off of the base, they are on the bottom, in the floor of the pond, and they come up and they're floating to catch the turbidity and let the water flow through. And so that is their intent.
And they're functioning as intended?
They are, that we have seen.
Okay.
I know it's not the purview of this board, but you had some divers out there recently also.
We did.
Yeah.
That's good.
And we're waiting for those preliminary reports to come.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chairman, Mr. O'Rourke, on Zoom, raise his hand.
So, Mr. O'Rourke, this isn't
I'd like to speak on this if possible.
So it's not a public hearing, this was more of a administrative update from what is going on. I know you have I know you have some comments, questions, or complaints. Please, if you have something going on, send it over to our Community Development Department so it can be looked into. I, I do know that the Conservation Committee also meets.
April 1st next week.
April 1st, too, and they'll, I think they take the comments to it there here if there's some new concerns.
It's Monday, they made.
Monday.
Monday?
There are some new concerns.
Okay. So, yeah, please, if you have new concerns going on, please, send it to the Community Development Department ahead of time, just so we can get the concern and get it addressed quickly, and then it can get to us and we can try to have a resolution.
Okay.
All right.
Yep, sounds good.
All right, thank you. All right. I don't even know where my agenda went. All right, any other ongoing development updates?
I do have an item under open session for topics not reasonably anticipated, 48 hours notice in advance of the meeting.
Okay.
In your packet, there should be an article for, a general bylaw for stormwater management.
Okay.
The Select Board asked me to get your comments on this. Now, I know most of you are just reading it for the first time this evening and hoping that if you digest it and submit comments via email, that would be very helpful in getting this sent, approved by the Select Board at their next meeting, which is the 26th, just before our next meeting.
Okay.
So if anyone had any comments on this. Now, originally, when this general bylaw came forth, it was the Planning Board that was the administrative authority of it. This has since been revised to be the Conservation Commission, which is far more consistent with some of the other stormwater management practices throughout the Commonwealth.
Okay.
So I just wanted the Planning Board to know that first it was their jurisdiction, but this has been switched over to Commonwealth.
Yeah, I, I know we've, it, it's come across our table once a year. I think I've seen, I forget his name, but he's presented stuff for the stormwater management. And I know it has to get done. Something has to get done. I know it's just been kind of delayed and not a priority, but, yeah, it's good to see someone taking a run at it. Yeah, I'll, it's a lot to read, but.
Are these?
Look into it.
Sorry, through the chair, are these new or updated?
This is a brand-new general bylaw.
Brand-new, okay.
And... I don't know if you know, but there was a time when it got presented at one meeting and it was an absolute disaster, I guess, from what I heard.
I don't even think it made the town meeting floor.
Okay.
It just, it got shut down by the selectmen and did not make the one. And that was in 2016, I believe.
Okay. All right, some reading material.
You want comments via email?
Yes.
All right. We have something here in our Pet, uh, Community Preservation Act.
Oh, right, yeah, that was on our last agenda.
Okay.
Asked for some additional information on the Community Preservation Act as they're looking for volunteers. This is the, this is the committee that would be established to implement B to the tax base for anyone who has real property or. I know that's generally a bug that folks don't want to digest, but that is what the Community Preservation Act does. And I sent you some correspondence that shows all the towns and cities in the Commonwealth that have Community Preservation Act adopted.
Mrs. Mazinski? Are you involved with this Community Preservation Act? And is that their one of the, maybe the open space?
Actually, yes.
How often, sorry, sorry, you're looking around. I don't know if you can just maybe ask, answer a quick question on it. Just a name, please.
Sure, Lisa Mazinski, 60 Oak Street.
How often are you looking to meet or what?
So actually, we just met Tuesday at our regular meeting, and we have a, a person who has agreed to come from Mendon to share what the Community Preservation Act can do for the town. And so we're gonna set up a separate meeting where we're hoping to get more volunteers and to educate folks about what it means and what it can do for the town.
Okay.
Because Mendon has leveraged their CPA funds to do some great things with their Town Hall and with purchasing open space and building recreation facilities.
And this is open space committee that's doing this?
Correct.
Okay. How often are they looking to meet to just, is it a separate committee?
Yes, it would be a separate committee. It eventually has to go to the ballot as well as to town meeting. And so we are just basically trying to kick it off so that more people will come and be involved. And one of our ideas was to put out a request to different boards and committees to see if anybody wanted to participate.
All right. How, like, once a week, every other week, once a month?
To, every other week at the most, probably more like once a month.
Are you guys more during the day or evening?
Right now, more during the day.
Okay. I know that's just one of my, my concerns.
But we could alternate.
Yeah.
Because it's only, it's very short-term, because when, when hopefully we pass it, it will then go to another committee that has to be created to disperse the funds. So then we would have a permanent Community Preservation Committee. This, what we're talking about now is just to basically run the operation to get it through what it needs to do to pass.
Okay.
May I just ask a question?
Yeah.
The, from the housing perspective, what is the intent of the CPA? Or what is their, how are they working with creating housing?
So they don't create, it wouldn't create housing. It would help fund, like, affordable senior housing.
Okay.
Things like that. So in Northbridge, they, I think they passed it two years ago, and they used a portion of their funds to purchase what is about 100 acres known as Castle Hill, has great historic meaning to townspeople. It used to be a major.
Major cattle dairy farm, right?
Dairy farm that supplied all milk and related products to fuel white machine work. So there was a huge historic component as well as open space. They've done great things with it. They're using some in Mendon to create a new senior center.
That's great.
So it's, it augments, it doesn't necessarily drive.
Yep.
The plan, but it would augment, you can use it for feasibility studies and things like that.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for.
I hope that helps.
Yeah, no, it, it's more information than a map, so, thank you.
You're welcome.
Now you did good. But no, that was good that you were here, and thank you for stepping up and asking, and, yeah.
Oh, sure, and we'll keep you posted when the meeting's gonna be, because Ann will come in and tell us all about the great things Mendon has done with their money.
All right.
Thanks.
Thank you.
Yeah, thanks.
Anyone interested in partaking in that?
Maybe.
No one's interested?
Yeah. I was gonna say, I'm interested, but my term's up in May, so I don't know if I'm gonna be here or not, so.
He'll be here.
So if you wanna.
You don't have to represent the Planning Board. You can just be yourself. We're happy to have warm bodies.
Do you have warm coffee or food or anything there?
That'll get you. We'll make it happen.
Yeah. Yeah, if, if you wanna let Mr. Benoit know when a meeting is, and I'm pretty sure someone will attend.
Absolutely. Okay.
You, you're probably more available during the day than I am. So whatever, whatever you have in need, and we'll see what we can do.
Thanks so much.
Thank you for the info. All right, I know we try to get these minutes done because we are backed up on them. I didn't have a chance to read them. I have not had a chance to read them, so if I ask.
Do we wanna go through them and submit updates by email?
We still need the motion to accept them.
Right.
I'm fine. It is what it is. I'm fine. We just hold them off until next meeting and try to get more eyes on them and get them done then. These are kind of, they're a few pages long.
Usually I have a chance to review these in advance, and I haven't had that opportunity yet.
Yeah, we'll, we'll push them to the next meeting. All right, miscellaneous, anything miscellaneous? Nope. All right. I will entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved? Oh. I apologize. I'm sorry. I wanted to add something to that stormwater bylaw discussion. I, I apologize. So Selectman Fitzpatrick asked us to consider modifying this to include some of the denser neighborhoods. And I was curious, I believe that's like the Villas Residential Neighborhoods, and I was curious what the Planning Board might feel about that. And I just wanted to add that to include into your comments when you submit those. Because that was one of the questions he asked, was how do we incorporate just that zone into this bylaw as applicable? And if some of the lots are so small, what, what is going to trip the stormwater? Is it a new foundation, a new house, or someone's just putting a deck on or building an addition? How do you, how do you differentiate that from, from requiring a stormwater program?
Well, I believe I heard it was something with one acre disturbed.
Right.
Triggers it.
Right.
Which I think none of those areas are even an acre, so they would never trigger it as written.
Right.
Or as it's presented, so.
Right, but some of the denser population kind of needs storm, stormwater management, or else it's just discharging onto neighboring properties. I see the point, but our stormwater consultant asked that we put this forth as is and then make amendments at a future town meeting as needed.
Yeah, I, I, I'd need to digest it and read some more, so.
I will send little reminders out for comments. It's just the article total piece. And the other, the other part is the conservation rules and regulations that they'll have to go over after acceptance at town. So it's just the Article 12, general bylaw. Sorry, just wanted to add that.
All right. Thank you. All right, and now I'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Still moved?
Made by Mr. Gertko, seconded by Mr. Preston. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
We are adjourned.